Welcome and thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision 2017 Candidate Debate. Tonight, I'm glad to have the candidates running for Circle Pines City Council joining me in our studio. And we're looking forward to getting to know them and hearing a little bit about what they believe and the direction that they think the city of Circle Pines should go. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks for taking time out of your schedule to come into the studio and share your opinions with us.
Thank you.
We're going to start our debate tonight with opening statements. After that, we'll go into a question and answer segment. And then we'll conclude with the candidates giving their closing statements. So let's get right into it. Dean Goldberg, you're up first with your opening statement.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. And my name is Dean Goldberg. I've lived in Circle Pines for a little over 28 years now with my wife Barb and my three daughters, Allison, Missy, and Andrea, although they're grown and on their own. I'm running for city council because I love living in Circle Pines. And I'm a doer. And I'd like to use that energy to give back to the city of Circle Pines by making sure that it continues to be a great city to live in. As it happens, I'm a person who believes that all neighborhoods in Circle Pines can benefit from careful fiscal planning and implementation of programs that reward, that have a return on investment. And I'd like to be able to be the person that does that so that we can continue to enjoy the amenities that we now do, such as our wonderful police and fire department and our beautiful parks and trails.
Thank you for your opening statement. Mark Zeimer, you're up next with your one-minute opening statement.
Thank you, yes. My name is Mark Zeimer. I've been a resident of Circle Pines for 14 years now. My wife Suzie and I have raised our four children here, and we love this community. Also, I'm a registered engineer. And in my line of work, I've worked for several clients who are cities, governmental agencies, governmental agencies. And I've designed electrical and control systems for facilities such as water treatment facilities, wastewater treatment facilities, street lighting. And so I, in those areas, I feel I can contribute to decision-making and looking forward in the city of Circle Pines. Circle Pines is a wonderful community. We've really enjoyed living here. And it is a mainly residential community with a limited commercial tax base. So it's important that the city be judicious in budgeting and spending. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I look forward to helping the city look closely at budgeting. And I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your opening statement. Our final candidate tonight is Jennifer Rowner. Thank you for being here and your opening statement.
Thanks. My name is Jennifer Rowner. I've lived in the community for 14 years with my husband. We have two little girls, seven and four. My husband actually grew up here, so he was born and raised. He is on the Centennial Fire Department stationed out of Station 1. So we really, community matters to us. And that's really one of the reasons that I wanted to run for city council. I'm not a politician by any means, but I'm a citizen who cares. I'm a citizen who wants my voice heard, and that's what I want to do for our citizens. I want to be that voice. The community is a small, close-knit community, and I kind of want to get a little bit more into that with maybe some festivals and things that surround the community. We have great parks and trails that we can do that kind of stuff in. And yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you for your opening statement. We're going to move on now to our question and answer portion. Mark, you'll be up first with our first question, dealing with the city budget. How would you prioritize when it comes to a city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first?
Well, yeah, that's something that I look forward to getting involved in as a city budget and taking a look at where we have our priorities. And I think balancing between the different needs and services is very important. And I think the first place to look is if, do we have any places where we're spending money where we don't really need to be? You know, are there just festivals or something like that where we can cut spending there? And but otherwise, look at balancing the city budget as much as possible.
Thank you for your answer. Jennifer, same question to you now. How would you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first?
The city budget is a really hard question to answer for Circle Pines. We're a small community. We do not have a lot of business base. Majority of our taxes come from our taxpayers. So when you're looking to cut things out of the budget or reduce spending, it's a really hard question to answer. Number one, I, the first thing I will not, or the last thing I should say I would look at is our public safety. We need to keep that intact. Going around listening to the citizens the last few weeks, their voice is they want to keep the departments that we have. Are we spending a little bit too much on our parks and our trails? Maybe. Is there some cutbacks we could take a look at there? I think our city administrator does a really good job of managing that budget. I don't think he overspends in any real area. So being able to, you know, sit down with the city administrator and the rest of the council and come up with some creative ways of how we can get around the budget and move forward from there.
Thank you for your answer. Dean, same question to you now. If you're prioritizing when it comes to the city budget, if you had to cut, where would you look first?
Yeah, it's a great question, Ben. And I think I would like to ask the question back. What would the reason be for wanting to cut budget? Knowing that answer would help guide my response. But the thing I would say is, you know, there are some areas that you might be able to take a look at. For example, when Lino Lakes left our fire department, it left a gap. And there are things we might be able to do to fill that gap. And I think it's worth looking at. Having said that, I also agree with Jennifer that keeping police and fire here and keeping safety number one is a huge issue. And I'm sure we're going to talk about that later, so I won't dwell on it. I think also the other areas that are the largest chunk of our budget are either personnel or parks and trails. So those would be the things you'd have to look at. There may be some minimal waste things you could look at. And I haven't gotten into that level of detail in the budget yet.
Thank you all for your answers. After every question, I'm going to allow you rebuttal time. If you choose to use it, you don't have to use it, but I'm always going to offer it to you. You'd have 15 seconds. Mark, you'd be first on this one if you choose to use it.
No, thanks.
Jennifer, did you need any more time?
I'm good.
Or Dean, did you need?
No, thank you.
All right, I'm always going to ask, and we'll see.
That's great.
Let's go on to our next question. Jennifer, you'll be first on this question. I want to transition to talking about roads and transportation. People have strong feelings when it comes to roads and roads being repaired and what roads should be repaired. When you think about Circle Pines, are there areas of the city that you think need some work? Are there roadways or intersections in Circle Pines that you would want to see improved in the next few years?
Well, the city right now has a plan in place. I do believe they are 85% done with their road project. I do believe it was a 10-year project, and I believe they're going on 10 years. We, they have done some creative budgeting and not kind of helping to save the citizens some money. Do we want to pay those taxes extra? Of course not. We don't want to. But the fact remains that our roads did need to be repaired. Our infrastructure was 33 years old. We have pipes underground that are disintegrating. Rainwater is going into our waste, and we're actually paying for that. So being able to replace those clay pipes with the PVC pipes that are being replaced now, along with the gas and sewer as well to upgrade those. And we're not going to have to look at those for another 70, 50 years. The, like I said, the majority, I think it's 85% that the city is complete with their project. There are some areas in the neighborhoods that are just getting some overlays done. The infrastructure is sound underneath.
Thank you. Dean, same question to you. What roadways or intersections in Circle Pines do you think need to be improved in the next few years?
Well, Jennifer really gave the answer to my question, you know, my answer to the question. The thing that I might add is I think the mayor and city council over the last X number of years, 10 years or so or longer, have done a great job of planning what our city needs, and they're in the process of doing it. I'm not aware of anything that is needed on top of what they're already doing. But I've also walked around through the neighborhoods. I've been to over 700 homes in this town. And I haven't heard anybody say, "My street needs work, and it's not on the plan." So I'm comfortable with where they're going now. But if the cities, if people in the city told me differently, I would respond to that.
Thank you for your answer. Mark, same question to you. What roadways or intersections in Circle Pines do you think need some repair and need to be improved in the next few years?
Well, as both Jennifer and Dean have mentioned, the city has a plan, and they're carrying it forward. And as I understand it, within a couple of years, the remaining streets will be repaired and redone. I think there are some areas to the west of Golden Lake that are still up for redoing. And in fact, I just talked to a citizen this weekend that was excited and anxious for that part to be completed. One thing I'd like to mention is a great advantage we have in Circle Pines is that our gas utility is a cooperative or owned by Circle Pines. And that makes it very easy then to coordinate services and utilities as they go in. We don't have to wait for Excel or somebody else to come in at, you know, whatever time they feel ready to do it. We can just have it all performed at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's move on to our next question now. Dean, we'll be circling back to you to start with this question. Let's talk about public safety a little bit. It's been a few years now since Lino Lakes left the Centennial Fire District. Going forward, do Circle Pines and Centerville need to find another city to join this fire district?
Yeah, it's a great question. And, you know, I've actually looked at various things, including a map, to say logistically which cities might be partners for us to strategize with. And there are some cities that we might be wanting to talk to because I think that gap, which I talked about in my earlier question, could be filled. There's a benefit to filling it. And so I would like to see city council explore those opportunities. You know, I don't know which cities would be willing to participate in something like that, but that's what we'd have to explore.
Thank you for your answer. Mark, same question to you now. Going forward, do Circle Pines and Centerville need to find another city to join the fire district?
Yes, I think that we need to look at what solutions can we find because our budgeting for fire, which is very important, we need to maintain an excellent fire department. But it has doubled over the last couple of years. So it's a very important issue, and it's placed a strain on the city budget. And I think we need to do our best to find a solution for it. Yeah, I agree that we need to approach cities around us and find out who might be interested in joining us and strengthening our fire department.
Thank you for your answer. Jennifer, same question to you now. Going forward, do Circle Pines and Centerville need to find another city to join the fire district?
Absolutely, absolutely, we do. Lino Lakes leaving us did leave a big hole with our budget. And logistically, Blaine and Lexington would be great partners. I don't think getting into another JPA like we did with Lino Lakes would make sense. Getting into a partnership agreement with those cities would make more sense. Sharing equipment. Lexington is looking at getting several-story new buildings in their town. They don't have a ladder. We have a ladder. There's no reason they need to be spending the money on buying another ladder truck when we could rent it out or however that would look. But absolutely, yes, we need to look at starting to partner with our surrounding communities.
Thank you. Did anyone want rebuttal time after that question? All right, let's move on to our next question then. Mark, you'll be first on this question. Let's talk a little bit about development, knowing that there's not a lot of room for development in Circle Pines. But, and you always can't always pick and choose the development that comes your way when you're sitting on the city council. What type of development, if the opportunity presented itself, would you like to see come to Circle Pines or redevelopment opportunities come to Circle Pines? Mark, you're first with that question.
Well, I think commercial development along the Lake Drive or, you know, the northeast side of Lexington. You know, we do have some great businesses in there. We do have the Down Under that I'm not sure what's going to be happening there, but perhaps there's some potential for development there. And like you say, there is limited space available for development. I guess that corridor would be a prime place for new development if something were to come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, same question to you. What type of development would you like to see come to the city of Circle Pines?
Well, like Mark mentioned, the Down Under is a big eyesore for our city, for our citizens. And the owners have had some ample time to redevelop that area. What I'd really like to see is some retail, maybe restaurants, go into that area, something that's going to benefit our citizens. Some of the smaller little restaurants that have gone up in the communities around us have done very well. And so I'd like to see something like that go in there. And what are we going to do to do that? I think that's what we really need to put our heads together. And how are we going to solve that problem? How, the empty space that we do have, how can we make that fit into our budget? How can we get those thriving?
Thank you for your answer. Dean, same question to you now. What type of development or redevelopment would you like to see come to the city of Circle Pines?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think when you think about development, everybody said it earlier, the Down Under is the place that needs to be redeveloped. And I think I agree with Jennifer. I think retail or restaurant with some sort of either entertainment or, you know, activities for youth in particular. I've, as I've walked through neighborhoods, I've heard from many people who've said, "I'd like somewhere for our youth to hang out and have a place to go after school, who aren't in sports." And so I would like to see that sort of thing fill that space.
Thank you for your answer. Anyone want rebuttal time after that question? All right, moving right along, let's move on to our next question. Jennifer, you'll be first on this question. As a smaller city, and we already talked about it a little bit when we talked about the fire district, as a smaller city, Circle Pines needs to collaborate with its neighbors. In what ways would you like to work with the cities around you to provide services and amenities for your residents?
Well, that's a good question. You know, I think there is some collaboration that goes on with our neighboring cities. I don't think there's a lot. And there are definitely some areas where we could use improvement in working together to kind of make our entire area. We're not just Circle Pines. We're not just Lexington. We're not just Lino Lakes. We're a huge community. And there are amenities that we use, and there are amenities that they use from us. I think sitting down with the other city councils and collaborate in how we can use the services that we have, the services that they have, and what we can do to help each other. So I think it would take some work to be able to sit down and go through something like that.
Thank you for your answer. Dean, same question to you now. In what ways would you like to work with the cities around you to collaborate, to provide services or amenities to your residents?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think, you know, I'm a big believer in listening to the people that live in these cities and understanding what amenities they would like. I think, to Jennifer's point, there's some pre-work that would have to be done to just kind of scope out the community and figure out what are they interested in? And then huddling up with the various city councils to have the conversation together about what things would we like to do to enhance our communities.
Thank you. Mark, we'll finish up this question with you. In what ways would you like to collaborate with the cities around you to provide services or amenities to your community?
Right, I think it's very important to have conversations surrounding amenities and services of all kinds and seeing what we have that complements another community. Jennifer mentioned in the previous question about the fire department. And perhaps an area that we could look at is our natural spaces. Blaine has a chunk that kind of, they're developing the townhomes that come just a little bit to the east of Lexington. There's some natural space there. Can we look to partner with Blaine? And, you know, we just love our natural spaces. Our family loves to use the trails. And we love to go up to Centerville, even whether biking on a nice day or just driving up there to use the beach. Looking at ways that we can partner to develop those things more. I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Thank you. Does anybody need extra time or rebuttal time? All right, next question. Let's see, Dean, you'll be starting on this question. Everyone runs for office for a reason, I think. If you were elected to the city council, what is something tangible that you want to accomplish? Something you want to do for your city and for the residents in your city? Dean, you're first.
I have a couple of things. The number one thing that comes to my mind is, as I've walked around and talked to people, one of the things I've heard is that people would like to be able to fix up their homes, but they don't have, they can't afford to do it. And their home is, might be in a state that bothers other neighbors and so on. I think there are some creative things that we might be able to do by seeking out grants or working with the high school to get some high school students to help clean up yards and do some things like that, projects around town for people. I'm also very interested in continuing the development of our parks and trails in particular. Again, I've heard from people, and I'm a biker myself, so, you know, you sort of get on some of these trails that have gravel, and people would like them to be paved. So there's some things that I'd like to see done in that area.
Thank you for your answer. Mark, question to you. If you were elected to the city council, what is something tangible that you would want to accomplish for the residents?
Well, I think that the city has a lot of assets that we need to look at and an area of my expertise is mainly in electrical design. But I work with people who do the process side and analyzing water side. But just the water delivery system, throughout the summer, people watering their lawns, it puts a big strain on the system. We need to look at augmenting the system and also looking for ways that we can perhaps use stormwater reuse. Are there economical ways we can do that? We just need to look at all the options on the table. We need to get some options identified and then compare them financially and see what makes the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, same question to you. If you were elected to the city council, what is something tangible that you would want to accomplish for the residents?
That's a question I hadn't come up with in the last week. I think actually probably something tangible that I really do want to accomplish is some of the developmental properties that we have, the opportunity to put things in. You know, I'm not huge on filling in space. I like the open fields. I like the trails and the parks. But open lots is, that's another thing. So being able to put something in there that's going to actually help our community, if I do get elected, that is actually going to be, one of my number-one priorities is get a couple of those spaces developed and things that the community wants. Not just fill it with something, but something that the community wants in there.
Thank you all. Anyone need extra time after that question? All right, let's move on to the last question I have for you. Talking a little bit about your community. Across our country, we're seeing such deep divisions, whether it be between lines of political party, socioeconomic status, race, religion, you name it. There's divisions everywhere you look. How will you foster a spirit of unity, both on the city council and in your city as a whole? Mark, you're first with this question.
Well, I think that in Circle Pines, we enjoy unity in a lot of ways. As I've, first of all, the neighbors I know, we may not agree on everything, but we're good friends. And the people I've talked to so far in knocking on doors, you know, we all have the best interests of Circle Pines at heart. So I think we just need to keep building upon that sense of unity that we already have and just continue to realize that we're in this together, and we need to work together to solve the problems that we have and do it in a civil and friendly way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, same question to you now. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both on the city council and also in your city as a whole?
Well, I think Mark is right. The community as a whole, there really is a sense of belonging and a sense of pride. One of my biggest pet peeves are labels. Labels do nobody any good. When there are things that need to get done, you need to sit at the table, you need to work together, and you need to figure it out, come up with ideas, and be done with it. Labels aren't going to do anybody any good. We need to play well in the sandbox together and move forward and make sure that our community is thriving, make sure our citizens are thriving, make sure our city hall is thriving. And we're doing the right things that need to be done.
Thank you for your answer. Dean, this question now it's you. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both on the city council and in the city as a whole?
So one of the things that, when I first started thinking about running for city council, I talked to Mayor Dave, and we talked a little bit about this very topic and the fact that our community could surely stand a little dose of some kind of a program that would help people to be more welcoming to everybody. And so I'm very interested in that. I've been doing some of that work in some volunteer things I do, and I'd like to continue that here. I also think on city council, in terms of working with unity amongst us and amongst our partners, I'm a team builder. It's what I have done in my career, in all of my jobs. I've had to do it there, and I think I would bring that to the group. I'd help them do that.
Thank you all, and thank you. Did anyone want extra time after that question I should ask? All right. And thank you for answering all the questions that I posed to you tonight. That's all that I have for you. But we're going to move in now to your opportunity for your closing statements. So, let's see, Dean, you'll be first with your closing statement tonight.
Okay. So, to the citizens of Circle Pines, I thank you for your time this evening to listen to me. And now that you know a little bit about me, I'd like to ask for your support on November 7th. I'm a hard worker. I'll do a good job for the city. And I'll be dedicated to listening to you and carrying your voice into city council. I'd also like to thank North Metro TV for affording us the opportunity to be here tonight. It's such a great opportunity for our citizens to understand who we are as people and candidates. And it's important for them to be knowledgeable, and this venue is a wonderful way to do that. I'd also like to thank everybody that's out there watching this because to be informed is very important when you're making decisions, and I'm glad that you're here doing that. So again, thank you for your support, and I'd love to get your vote on November 7th.
Thank you for your closing statement. Mark, we'll move over to you now with your closing statement.
Yes, thank you. Circle Pines is a wonderful community, natural spaces, parks, small-town community feel, yet within a major metropolitan area. We have a lot of advantages in Circle Pines. My wife Suzie and I have really enjoyed living here, raising our four children. Just so many benefits to being in this community. As an engineer, I've been able to work with a lot of cities. And I look forward to being able to, if elected, contribute my knowledge in working with cities, both from a technical standpoint and from understanding project budgets and cities' limitations and what they can do. I look forward to working with the city administrator, understanding how things work in the city. And I ask you for your vote on November 7th. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your closing statement. And Jennifer, you'll finish tonight with your closing statement.
Thank you very much. I'll keep mine very short and sweet. I thank everybody for their time and their patience as we work through this. Certainly, if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. I'm out and about in the neighborhood, and that's really what I want to be about, is that voice for you. I want everybody to feel comfortable coming to city hall and sitting through a meeting and having at least one person they feel comfortable coming up and talking to, whether it be concern, a problem, questions, anything like that. So I thank you for your time.
I want to thank you all for your time and coming in tonight again, taking time out of your schedule to do this. We really appreciate you doing that. I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete local decision coverage. It's all on there for you. There's candidate biographies for all the races this fall, as well as an opportunity, if you missed the portion of this debate or want to watch any of our other debate programs, they're all there for you under the local decision tab on North Metro TV. Again, this was the debate for the Circle Pine City Council race. Two of these candidates will be elected in November, and now it is up to you. So I've been your moderator, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.